Yeah, see, when you get down there to that at a hundred and ten, you can't see all of it.
You zoom out.
Yeah, that's fine.
That is.
I don't think there's anything, uh, first that would need to be. I'll let it tonight for any reason. If, um, have you heard back from Latimore? We're still not, we're still waiting on what they might want to propose, but as far as my, my, I don't, I didn't.
Marty. How are you?
Real stuff, yeah, being real stuff, that's necessarily, uh, just a couple semantic things more or less. So nothing that I think you need to.
Too much work, you know, those type of things. Other than that, I think I'm all right.
Yeah.
You good? Family good?
Good.
Did you, you was gonna have some surgery? What, what'd you have?
Had cataract surgery.
Okay, went good?
Went good.
All right. I remembered you, you said you had the one knee and you.
I got one knee and the.
You talking about having to have the other one?
Yeah, sometime I will. Had a cortisone shot in it a couple months ago and so far it's held and holding out, but.
Oh, Lord, yeah.
Just a matter of time, just putting it off.
Oh, yeah. My brother had. Broke his kneecap in half.
I didn't have to.
Broke half, broke off part of his kneecap long twenty years ago. So they attached that tendon and that old muscle all back to a little piece of the. Kneecap and it ain't never been the same. And he's now to a point, I'm like, you need to just go maybe get a knee replacement. They said, well, it still ain't gonna help cause the muscle has had such atrophy that, uh, over the years. I said, slant it to the right. If you have it done, at least it won't hurt.
This one that I have replaced.
Yeah, well, good. Well, I might encourage you. Go on.
Cortisone shot it, we talking about having this one fixed, I said. You were promised me that this one will be as good as this one. You'll do it tomorrow. He said, I'm sorry, can't do that. Get all different.
Where are we, January?
She's good. Never know, it's always, it's a surgery and.
Yeah. Definitely medical stuff is on this.
Yep.
Different time, different company.
Oh, how are you?
Evening, good. How are you doing?
Good. How's your dad?
He's great. Full speed ahead.
Still letting him come in, fiddling around?
Absolutely, he's there every morning.
I'm sure.
Sure is.
Seen his dad in years.
He's on Shelby School Board when I was on Kaline Ken School Board, that's where I got the noise.
Stay up and watch all the football games.
No, halftime was good for me.
Y'all had nothing halftime?
Yeah, no kidding.
I saw like three or four scores up. I said, I better not watch anymore of this game.
Yeah, it was crazy.
Worth me being late.
That's for sure. All right, I'll call the Town of Bulling Springs Council meeting for January twenty twenty-three to order. First item of business is adoption of the agenda. We have a few requests for changes, uh, to present to council. Uh, one is to move the MOU, an Agreement for Retail Strategies, out of the consent agenda and move that to the first item of regular business, um, so that we can look at that in a bit more detail. The other one is from Councilwoman Gant, who will not be able to make it this evening due to health issues. And she requests that the item, uh, concerning the license plate readers be removed from the agenda and moved to next month. So those are the two requests. What is the pleasure of council on adoption of the agenda?
I'll motion to adopt the revised agenda.
All right, Mr. Edwards with that motion. Is there a second?
Why would we not proceed with the LPR stuff? I mean, just, just a question. I mean, if, if we have four, four members of the board here tonight and if it comes down to two to two vote, then you would have a vote as well. I mean, I don't, I don't know that I would be in agreement to set that aside. If, if the, if the company's here to do the presentation, chief's here.
And I just have a question about, uh, removing some, can I just call in and ask for something being removed from the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, there's no. Nothing prohibit it, uh, you don't even have to have an agenda.
But we don't have to do it though, do we?
No, don't, you don't have to.
I'm, I'm not.
Oh, you mean if you.
Figuring against Ms. Gant, I'm just trying to get the protocol here in case.
Yeah, and me, me either. I, you know, she's a very valuable part of the board and, but.
Maybe, her concern maybe that if, cause she's not, uh, to my understanding, excused by one of the, you know, very limited reasons, uh, so that her, you know, her vote.
Be a yes vote.
Would be still in the affirmative, is that?
Yeah.
Do you understand it correct? So, on a motion, so that may be, may be why she wants further discussion on it or wants to have her input, but, uh, that maybe that's her concern, I don't know. But, uh.
For clarification, her vote would be a yes vote if she in absence? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, cause she's not here to oppose.
There's only very limited reasons that you can be excused from voting and, and from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like she would fall in one of those categories.
Let, let me add, I'm not opposed to taking it off. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we're following the protocol. So it doesn't really matter to me whether we take it off. The motion is to, to, the, the motion is to.
To take it off the agenda.
I think the intent of the manager's, you know, the agenda tonight is for discussion to take place on. It doesn't mean anybody can't make a motion, but the intent is for it to, for discussion to take place.
Yeah, you could, you could do that. You don't have to vote on anything tonight necessarily. If, if you want to give her, she'd have an opportunity to review the materials, was, you know, all that kind of thing. So it's not, uh, and still could, of course, voice her, uh, her, her opinions at the next meeting if, if you did want to proceed with the presentation or whatever was planned.
But do we have the parties here tonight?
Uh, the company's not here, it's just the chief that's gonna be presenting.
Okay, the co, okay.
Yeah, and, and to your point, it is under the discussion section, which typically we would get some feedback from you all and then bring back a formal approval or, or not, you know, whichever way you all wanted to proceed. That's kinda what that section is designed to do, is give us some direction and then we bring it back next month so we can have the discussion and then, um, could have a formal vote next month if that's what you all wanted to do.
You have a motion, second, I called a question.
Is, was there a second?
I thought there was.
No, I just motioned, and in fact, I'm, you know, I'm indifferent. I'll, I'll retract it if we just wanna have an open discussion and then continue the discussion next week or next month. I'll retract my motion.
Or you have, or just fail first.
Just no second?
No second, yeah.
Okay.
Easy enough.
So, we'll continue with the LPR discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the change for the MOU to be removed from consent agenda to the first item of regular business?
Don't move.
A motion for Mr. Green, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Thomas. All those in favor, you can let it be known electronically.
Do I have to? I'll get there.
Yeah, mine's not, I'm refreshing.
I don't know what I'll ever get. I'm, I'm never ready for that.
No.
I'm ready to say yay.
I don't know if I'm having technical difficulties now or if you can.
There you go.
Yep, thank you.
All right, the, uh, agenda is adopted as amended. Are there any citizens here that would like to address the board for something other than an item on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Um, Mr. Evans, if you'll, we welcome you to come up and give us an update on Gardner Web.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for having me this month. A couple bullet points here. Uh, in December, we had a short window that we pushed, uh, the United Way of Cleveland County across our campus. Excited to report we raised about twelve thousand dollars, uh, for the community in that effort. We always kinda chuckle that when we do a fundraising activity focused at the campus, ninety-five percent of our, uh, campus is, uh, poor, starving college students. So we're always excited to see any success there. Save the date for Webstock. I think we talked about that last month. Obviously, that's a, a big partnership there, um, on the horizon for us and you guys as well. New enhanced Starbucks opening next Tuesday, so a Starbucks here in Bulling Springs. Public is welcome to come. I know sometimes we get questions of can the public come to Tucker Student Center, cause we have different eateries and things. Absolutely, come on. Um, I would not recommend it around nine o'clock if it's Starbucks, cause come before nine or come maybe ten thirty, just because of a college student's schedule and, uh, fancy coffee. Uh, starting January twelfth, so next week, uh, we'll actually honor, uh, the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. So if you visit our website, you can see the different activities related to that. Uh, and then students are coming back, so spring sports, events, et cetera, will be kicking into gear soon. And that's all I have for you guys this evening, so thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. What, what was that date for Webstock?
Twenty-second, I believe it is.
April twenty-second, very good. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Pittman and, and Reverend Wallace are here to, uh, give us an update on the community garden. Sorry to call you out like that, Reverend.
I'm glad to have them here. So it was about a year ago when, uh, when we came to you, started talking about an idea that, that Reverend Wallace had for a community garden and, uh, some of you have been out there. It, uh, it did happen. And some of the highlights, you can see on, I think you got a copy of this electronically. But we ended up with about forty growers this season actually, uh, producing in the garden. We had over a hundred and fifty volunteers helping in some sort or fashion out there. A number of Gardner Web students coming out from different clubs and teams. One of the goals was to help, uh, food banks and centers in Shelby. We did donate over five hundred pounds of produce. Uh, and we, I hope that will triple this year. That's, that's one of my goals. Uh, we plan five new beds this year, so that'll be a total of thirty. And then we've got four special access beds, which are higher up for children or seniors who may not be able to get down to the regular ones. And I've been talking with several centers in town, uh, for special needs children and adults to come out and work some of the beds as a therapeutic type garden. We still need a shed, uh, badly. We need a fence. Deer are out there every day munching on the things that people are growing. We need a little more guidance for some of the new growers, I think. Uh, that's, that was expressed. And maybe a better system of getting produce to the end users. But overall, I'd say it was a, a successful year. I'm pleased with it. I didn't think we'd be this far along when we talked about it last year at this time. Uh, and special thanks to many of you who've come out and helped. Uh, chief has been out there a lot. Uh, several of you have been out. Justin has been helpful with our finances, Rotary Club. Uh, the town provided a lot of compost which was put to good use out there, so, uh, and the labor to get it to us. So we are very, very appreciative for that. Brother Wade.
Ditto. I really do thank you all and this community. I mean, it's just been, I was at a meeting last evening and I was telling the folks, I say that it's, it's just amazing to. I had great hopes, but I mean, went far beyond what my hopes were, expectations. And seeing how many people, you know, really, you know, have gotten involved and those that seem to, um, be showing an interest. You know, as we, you know, continue to try and move forward. So, uh, you know, we're just thankful to, uh, you all and for, you know, this entire, uh, community. And I've told folk, I say, to me, it's, it's been a, a God thing. I was at a meeting last evening and was sitting next to an individual that, uh, Brother Don and I are gonna be talking with as far as, uh, grant money for, you know. I went there not knowing, you know, that this person would have been there and ended up sitting right next to him. And so, uh, you know, but I, I just tell people, I say that all of this to me has been, you know, the hand of the Lord helping us that we would, uh, be community and, uh, and do something positive. And so, uh, you know, thank you all.
Any comments, any questions? Be glad to try to address those. We do have some openings for this coming year, so anyone wants to garden. Uh, we're taking applications until middle of February.
Your, your vision and your work ethic is inspiring and to see it come to fruition has been great. Thank you for what you've done.
What, what size building do you need?
You know, we'll, we'll take whatever we can get, but, uh, I'm thinking something along ten by twelve, eight by twelve. Just to keep tools in, maybe a refrigerator, so we can, uh, keep the produce fresh until we can get it to the food bank.
Just, just curious in case.
If, if you, yeah, if you come across something, let me know.
Yes, sir, thanks.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda. This is just a package of items that don't require much discussion, that we can approve all at once, including the minutes, the Greenway Grant support, appointing Ms. Clark to the board, TDA, the Shop of the Cop budget amendment and changing the speed limit from forty-five to thirty-five there, um, as requested. Of course, in the MOU has been moved out. Is there a, a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, um, motion for Mr. Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Green. You can vote yea or nay on the.
No, not one. No, not one. I'm not working now.
Motion, so yes.
Think you can take it verbally?
All those in favor, yeah. All, so that's a unanimous.
All right, there we.
Approval of the consent agenda. Our first item of regular business, uh, in the amended agenda is the MOU, an Agreement for Retail Strategies. Justin, I'll let you speak to that a bit.
Thank you, sir. Um, so what we've got, uh, in your packets is the, uh, MOU between, um, Gardner Web, Cleveland County and Town of Bulling Springs. Um, to partake in the retail strategies, a training course, the, um, first two pages of the MOU and then the following few pages are the actual agreement with, uh, retail strategies. Mr. Schweppi's reviewed that agreement. Uh, the university's attorneys reviewed that agreement. And, um, we did a, a budget amendment to account for the incoming funds from Gardner Web and the county last month. So it's just the agreement that's left to, uh, to approve, but happy to answer any questions.
Now, where did we pull that money from?
Um, so the money from them, um, is just money that we're accounting for coming in and then being spent out. And then the six thousand, sixty-two hundred, I think that's our part, um, we pulled from ARPA funds.
Okay. And I noticed on the signature page, it had Brian Epley as county manager. Is he still employed there?
He is until the end of the month.
Okay, I didn't know when he was leaving. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the MOU retail agreement?
Motion to approve the MOU retail agreement.
All right, Mr. Litten with the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Thomas. Cast your votes. Yea or nay?
I'm, I'm not.
You may have to give it, you, the thumb signal to.
Green, green votes affirmative.
I mean, but I'm, I'm on it and hitting.
So that carries.
There you go.
Unanimously, the next item of business is the Latimore wastewater agreement, which expires next month.
LGC letter.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm out of order. Uh, next item of business is the LGC letter. Informing them of our financial performance indicators of concern being zero point one three percent low. Justin, anything else?
Uh, we made the changes that, uh, Mr. Litten sent out via email yesterday and, um, made the, uh, correction on the zero point one three. So that, uh, revised version should be what you have there and, um, that'll be signed by everyone and sent to the LGC.
Questions or comments from council?
If I recall right, this is just a, uh, formality saying that we acknowledge we were below the metric. We will work to not do it again.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the letter?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Green, second for Mr. Edwards. All those in favor? All right, that carries unanimously. And now to the Latimore, um, wastewater treatment and system maintenance, which expires next month. Uh, you've got the agreement copy, a clean copy. Not a lot, not a lot changed from.
It's been pretty much kept the same. We've tried to just clean it up a little bit over the years. I think some different things have been added in about previous agreements, as those were kinda put together, but, um, no, sir, the general intent is the same, that we'll keep, um, tracking the, uh, expenses that we have for Latimore and, uh, they'll have a separate Latimore rate that's set in our schedule of fees, along with the additional ten dollar charge. And, um, the intent really, or the, the recommendation of NC Rural Water was to keep track of those charges for another two years and then, um, convene with Latimore and figure out how everybody wanted to move forward based on those, those numbers, cause right now we're, we're kinda working off of estimates. Uh, and one note, I, I was supposed to hear from Mayor Beal this afternoon, cause Latimore had a meeting last night. Didn't hear from him, so, um, you all can approve this and if there are any substantial changes, I'll bring it back next month. If there's just some administrative things, then, you know, we'll, we'll just adjust that accordingly. But, um, yeah, if anything big was gonna change based on their discussion last night, I wanted to have that for you, but I don't expect any. Like I said, uh, Mike and I have met with Mr., or Mayor Beal and NC Rural Water for a few times and discussed all that.
So it's two years from this February.
Yes, sir.
Expires the first of February or the end of February?
Um, I think it's the, from the date of the agreement and the last agreement was February fifth or seventh, or somewhere around that, that first week.
Okay.
I think it's three months prior is, is when the, there'll be a period where you'll be negotiating, or not negotiating, I guess we'll be negotiating maybe, but looking at numbers, looking at the fees, looking at all the logistics, the numbers, all that kind of stuff. And then, you know, that prior, leading up to the expiration date will, will be an opportunity to just amend, revise, renegotiate, whatever. You know, up before, you know, till the expiration date. And then if it, they didn't wanna do it anymore, and then it's their liability, their, their problem, essentially.
Any question?
We still have a working committee that works on this, is that correct? Who, who's the committee?
So, the mayor, mayor pro temp.
Okay, and you're good with the work and the progress? Or you wouldn't be presenting it?
Yeah, I think so, as far as the policy goes. It, as Justin said, a lot of it was just cleaning up some of the language. I don't think we really changed anything significant.
What's the history on keeping the accurate account of expenses time and spent working on the system that we feel we need two more years?
Um, we've only been doing that for about a year.
Okay. Not enough data, basically.
Correct.
With the committee, the staff and the attorneys fine with it, I, I'd make a motion that we approve the revised contract with the Town of Latimore for wastewater treatment and system maintenance.
All right, Mr. Thomas has made that motion.
Second.
Second for Mr. Green. All those in favor? Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor can let, let it be known.
And I greatly appreciate y'all's hard work on that. I know it's been a sort of a compromise of, of ideals at times, so.
Yeah, one comment I'd have is I, I, I just wanna make sure that we keep enough records to real, to know that, that citizens of Bulling Springs are not subsidizing the Latimore project.
And I think that two years of data plus whatever we have will help.
Yeah, sure.
Point, good, good point.
All right, next item is the system development fee firm selection. We have two firms that have put bids forth uh, to help us with our fee structures for infrastructure and, and as we begin to expand. Recommendations from NC Rural Water. We have Gavel and Dorn and McGill.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is based off the recommendation from NC Ru- Rural Water, um, gosh, six or eight months ago now, when, uh, Ms. Melton was here to, uh, present. But, um, we sent out a request for bids, we got two bids. Um, I don't have a, a formal recommendation for you, cause I was a little torn. We've got two good bidders. Uh, one is lower than the other, but one is a firm that we've worked with on the Streetscape project and, um, we'll be working with on our AIA grant. So there's some, um, sort of a known entity. But I was, um, you know, a little, a little more leaning toward, uh, the cheaper option, um, the more cost effective option, let's say. The, the statutes really outline how the system development fee study has to be done, so, um, I don't really feel like there's gonna be a huge difference between the final product um, on those two firms, but, um, sometimes it's, um, there's a little more weight given to the firm you've got experience with, so, uh, just throw that out there for your consideration. I think either one would be a good choice, though.
Did notice one says completion time one month, the other one says seven months. Pretty good, pretty.
Quite the spread.
Yeah.
To me, one month sounds a little rushed.
I, I, you know, I think it's, um, it did seem a little rushed to me too. I, I would say that, um, McGill's is probably a little bit longer, just because they have so many projects going on, they're a bigger firm, um, so.
So you think a month is sufficient?
I, I think they could do it in a month, yes, sir. You know, would it, would it go a little bit further, you know, maybe, but, um, yeah, I think it could be done. It's, um, it's a pretty straightforward study. Just has to be done by a credentialed engineer.
Did we check any references? Yeah, they referenced several cities or towns.
Yes, sir. Um, I talked to Randlow. Um, they, uh, used Gavel and Dorn a couple of years ago for a system development fee study and we're, we're satisfied with it. And, um, talked to, um, of course, we know McGill, but, um, talked to Bestmar City about McGill. Good recommendation.
How much additional work might it be for you or, or Mike or anybody else dealing with somebody new?
You know, I thought about that and, um, it could be, it could save some time, but actually in McGill's packet, I think they made mention of how they spend some of those seven months gathering information and getting all that from us, so, um, I felt like maybe they, they're not gonna have that information anyway and we're gonna have to provide it to whichever firm. So there's a relationship there, but I don't think that that's gonna cut down on costs or time or anything like that. And one thing that I did think was a little promising is Gavel and Dorn mentioned that, um, the upper limit would be fifteen thousand. And, um, Randlow's study was much cheaper than fifteen thousand, so I don't know if we get into it and it's even cheaper than that or the max is like that, just depending on the, the system. I'm sure it varies a little bit by, by town.
So far I've heard, I've not heard anything that, that would convince me that we should go with a higher bid.
I agree. And, I mean, they're both time and, well, time and material, but time. So, I mean, it's like a not to exceed amount, and they'd have to get approval to come, you know, through Justin and us to go higher if they need to for whatever reason. I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, introducing a new consultant to remain competitive, right? Uh, I appreciate the McGill relationship, but, um, competition says a lot, too, so.
I move we award the contract to Gavel and Dorn.
Alright, motion for Mr. Green to award the systems fee contract to Gavel and Dorn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Edwards. Any other discussion?
Where, where are we getting the funds for this?
Uh, that is budgeted in the, uh, utility fund. We budgeted twenty thousand based on some estimates I'd gotten last year, so coming in under budget and hopefully even lower than that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, I should've mentioned that.
Alright, all those in favor, cast your votes. Beat me to it.
Still can't get used to that.
I know.
Me either, I don't think I will.
Alright, that carries, Gavel and Dorn. Alright, next item in regular business is considering changes to chapter one fourteen for peddlers and solicitors. I believe Mr. Sontag, Sontag, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
How's that for us?
Yep, so when we came away from the last meeting, um, there were kind of two, and I apologize, I'm coming out of LSAT studying La La Land, so I might rely on my notes a little bit more heavily tonight than, uh, than last time, but, um, um, and like, coming out of the meeting last time, we had two major changes that we wanted to see happen from the council. Um, the first was to include a rule about, um, having a uniform. Um, I expanded that language a little bit to require a uniform or other, you know, clearly visible branded item. And, you know, internally on the form, um, that they would have to fill out, we would give them a section to, you know, upload a picture of their own uniform, we'd keep that in our records, kinda, you know, know, know what everyone's gonna look like. And, um, if they don't have a, a, a uniform or other clearly visible branded item, we would give them an opportunity to explain why. Um, you know, I didn't think the intention would be to, um, you know, I could just imagine cases where, you know, a, a, a new organization or a church group that didn't have any, you know, shirts, you know, we wouldn't wanna make them, uh, have to spend money on that, just for a couple week, you know, uh, temporary, uh, fundraising effort. Um, so I thought that was a, a good way to address that. And then in section one fourteen, O two C, um, I had to request, the other change was to make the, uh, a yearly, eh, a yearly food vendor, uh, license and, um, make it, also make a, excuse me, also make a one-time license, um, but make the yearly license the more, you know, the one we would want people to go with. Um, so on the recommendation that we heard in the meeting, uh, we made the one-time license twenty-five dollars, uh, and last for seven days. We also thought about making it fifty dollars, just to really make, you know, drive the point home, hey, go ahead and get the, go ahead and get the yearly one, but, uh, we wanted to go with the recommendation from the meeting. Um, and we increased the yearly food, uh, truck license to a hundred dollars from twenty-five dollars, but that is keeping in the, in proportion with, you know, the increasing it from ninety days to three hundred and sixty-five days. You know, that it was, it's proportionally the same cost. That was it, that was the big change.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
I think he's done a lot of good work on that and.
I agree.
I, I also like the fact that we, it's been presented, we've had a chance to review it, we've taken, uh, comments from citizens and we've reviewed it again. I mean, I realize on some items that are emerg- emergency situations, we have, we need to rush, but when it's not, then it's good to take our time and receive comments and remarks and have discussion.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the young lady's here if she wanted to make a comment.
Daphne, would you like to say anything? For the potential final vote?
I just wanted to say that I enjoyed the process and it was very educational and I enjoyed making friends along the way.
Mm-hmm. You're the best, Daphne.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll motion to amend chapter one fourteen as presented.
Alright, Mr. Edwards with that motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Litten. Any other discussion?
I just had a question, you know, we do have some vendors who've already gone, know the process. How will we communicate with them, the new process, if, if, you know, if something's changed?
We've got those records, so we'll reach out to, to them and let them know, um, that that's changed. Food trucks and solicitors and, yeah.
Any that we have that information, I will communicate with them that
Yeah.
this has changed and you need to.
And we'll post it to the website and try and make posts on social media to get the word out as well and, uh, newsletter, so. I know we won't reach everybody, but we'll, we'll make an effort at it.
So last.
Good question. Alright, there's a motion and a second. The voting has begun. And it passes unanimously.
Great work.
Thank you, Grayson, for that.
Congratulations, Daphne.
Alright, let's see here. We are now into the discussion items where, uh, the draft sewer extension policy, I believe.
I'll tee that one up for Grayson. Um, so I, I think that we're all, um, all aware of this, um, but just to give some, some background, um, we've had conversations, um, over the years about, uh, unsued areas in town and how to, uh, address those when they get to the point where lots need new, uh, septic tanks and they start to, uh, become issues. And, uh, most of those areas were put in or were developed during the, I think it was mid nineties when there was a moratorium placed on new connections to our sewer system. Unfortunately couldn't tie any of those homes into our, um, infrastructure, but the development still occurred and it occurred with, uh, with septic tanks. So, um, the question has been, what do we do about that? And, um, Grayson has done some great work and I won't steal his thunder on it, but, um, that's sort of the, the history on it is trying to address that question and, um, take it away.
Yeah, perfect. Well, as Justin mentioned, you know, this is a problem that we, we could see on the horizon, we know that it's on the way. And it, there's a lot of changes here. And I had to remind myself this as I keep going through it, it's kind of the, the biggest, kind of the big a thousand foot view of the, of the changes, is that we would, kind of fundamentals, we would be altering that the town would, it's no longer gonna be obligated to pay for those extensions, the current wording, we would be. And I wasn't even really going through it, it sure exactly how we would go about that process, cause there wasn't really a, there wasn't really any way to, you know, let residents know, this is how you, you trigger this process, how we start having these conversations and the path forward for that. So, you know, as you said, you know, while the septic tanks did certainly increase the cost of the homes when the, you know, residents bought them, you know, the town extending the sewer to them will raise property values for those folks. And on the other side of those, from the older developments, the, all that new development that we had, you know, they were required to have the sewers built out to them and have connections to it. And so they had the increased costs in their homes from that. It's kinda presented us with a, with an issue, is, you know, as it currently is, is, um, essentially those people who had to pay for the increased cost of their house with the sewer extension to them, would now, in effect, be paying twice for sewer extension. You know, once as a taxpayer and once in the increased cost of their homes. So that was kind of what we were trying to balance here, is to make this a, an easy to understand process that is, you know, gives us a path forward to address this issue, um, while also kind of trying to balance the, uh, the fairness of the, of the whole issue. And still making it financially feasible to, to accomplish. So with that in mind, we made four, uh, beyond the, the biggest thousand foot view change, we made four major changes in the ordinance itself. Um, we started off by reviewing several policies from other towns and having conversations with the school of government. And the intent of these changes is to, um, so that we can now apply, instead of the town paying for it, we can apply a special assessment, to, uh, to get that money back from the folks that, that the sewer is extended to. Um, and they can pay it over a twenty-year period, uh, with interest as required by the general statutes, or in one lump sum, but we'll get to that a little bit later. Um, the first major change comes in section fifty dot three oh two. Uh, we added a petition requirement. Like I said, in the other one, it was, it was unclear how we even begin this, these conversations with these residents. Because these projects will be targeting specific neighborhoods or streets or parts of streets, uh, we thought that requiring a, a petition from them would show a high degree of support for the project and it would demonstrate their willingness to, you know, their understanding, they're taking these costs on and, that, that everyone's on the, on the same page from the beginning in the neighborhood. And, um, because the special assessments would be levied against everyone whose property is benefited by the development, you know, we wanted to make it a, a pretty high threshold, um, to, to bring the new extensions, cause it couldn't be, you know, uh, if only fifty percent of the neighborhoods bought in, well, fifty percent, the other fifty percent's still gonna have to, to pay for it. So we set that at seventy-five percent, uh, the threshold requirement in the petition. And that seventy-five percent needs to own at least seventy-five percent of the lineal frontage of the street abutting the property. Uh, that was fairly common language that we saw in, in a lot of the other ordinances and we, we, we really liked that. In the case of an undivided interest, uh, we have also initiated a seventy-five percent requirement with an undivided interest. So, you know, property with four owners, three of the four would have to agree to the sewer extension to then be counted as one single vote in favor of extension. So, we're not gonna have a situation where someone owns twenty percent of the street, each of them owns five percent, you know, to, to have that twenty percent added into the seventy-five percent lineal frontage, um, they would all, they would all need to be a part of it. Up to that threshold. Uh, the second major change comes in the section three oh two C one B. So to determine who's gonna be a part of that, that, uh, that threshold, uh, residents will match their project proposal with the twenty-year capital improvement plan that, uh, I believe it came out in twenty twenty-one. And we added a requirement to, uh, that all properties within two hundred feet of the road needs to be included in, uh, the project area of the petition. And our thinking behind that was, you know, since we're trying to address the issue of aging septic tanks, you know, projects, uh, excuse me, properties, uh, with homes more than two hundred feet off the road, they could probably handle, uh, putting in another septic tank, so, uh, while they would be welcome to be, add their name to the petition, you know, they would not necessarily have to be a part of that. The town clerk or someone else designated by council, uh, will confirm that all of these requirements are met on the petition and will then certify the same with council. Which brings us to the third change. So after, uh, you know, Noah or someone comes up and certifies that, uh, with the council, uh, the town will contract with an engineer to review the project, estimate the need for oversized lines and over other basic, uh, sewer facilities that would kinda serve a general public use, but again, I'll come back to that a little bit later. Um, and the engineer will also estimate the final total cost. Um, that total cost will be exclu-, uh, the, the cost of the engineer will be excluded from the total cost of the residents. You know, even, even if we end up not going, the, the thinking behind that was even if we don't end up going through with the project or we retire and it's not feasible, you know, it's still a, it's valuable information for, you know, the town to be able to develop and have going forward to, uh, you know, updated estimates of the cost and have a, a better idea of when we get to that point later, um, how to begin going about that. So that was the reason why we, we thought we should maybe take that cost. Once the evaluation is complete, uh, the town manager shall present the findings to council and provide a recommendation onto the feasibility of the project. Council, uh, could end the project right there, of course, uh, by deciding it's not feasible, uh, but if we decide, okay, this looks like something we can, we can do, then the council will direct the petition review committee to meet, which is a new committee that this, this would establish. This committee is created in section fifty dot three oh one and it will be made up of two council members, at least two residents named on the petition as like neighborhood representatives. The, uh, town manager, public works director and the town engineer who conducted the work for us. They will convene, go over kind of a preliminary review of the project amongst themselves and, and really begin to dig into the weeds of, of actually what it's gonna take to make this happen, make sure everyone's on the same page in regards to the stipulations of this ordinance and the understanding of the total cost and how that's all gonna work. If after the meeting, everything is or, in order and, you know, everyone's still bought in and interested, the committee will give preliminary approval to the project and bring it before the council again. And now the fourth change is if the council decides to give final approval of the project after this, uh, petition review committee meets, the extensions will be installed and at that point we would know the final total cost. Sections fifty dot three oh two G and F, uh, describes what will happen next. G states that we will apply a special assessment to the properties according to the benefit conferred upon it by a project. Uh, we can assess up to a hundred percent of the total cost, according to general statute one sixty-eight, article ten. Uh, property owners may pay in equal annual installments for up to twenty years with interest as required by the statute, as I mentioned, or pay in one lump sum. And, uh, F then describes, uh, what I've kinda pushed off a few times, um, is like what items the town would perhaps be willing to pay for. And as written, right now, um, if the engineer or public works director believe it's advisable to install larger sized sewer, uh, lines, uh, to serve, then necessary to serve the project area, you know, fire hydrants, pumping stations or other general system facilities, uh, those will be paid for by the town and not included, um, in the resident's total cost. Um, you know, our thinking with that was that, you know, those, those facilities, facilities are installed for general public use. If, you know, future development, we would have those, that infrastructure in place then. Um, and it really, you know, requiring them to pay for ten inch versus eight, and they don't need the ten inch line, uh, we thought that, you know, we, we should take that cost on. Yeah, and tho- those are the, those are the four major changes. There's some other, you know, we changed some verbiage and, uh, kind of adjusted some individual words, but that's, that's the bulk of, of the changes that we've made. I'd love to take any questions or me and Justin will tag team and, and try and, uh, fill in the gaps if there are any.
Well, Daniel and I worked with, uh, met town management on this policy. It's been a burning question on me for well over twenty years, you know, what, what to do about unsued areas and how to approach it. And there's no easy answer. If you look at the capital improvement project for sewer lines, that was done, I don't know, a year or two ago or maybe updated. I mean, a neighborhood where I live with forty-three homes, it's well over a million dollars to run sewer in that neighborhood, in the High Point neighborhood. And the bottom line is, the town can't afford to do it, or it puts a lot of financial pressure on the town if the town were to bore, bear that entire cost. So, I, I think it's a good policy, you know, I, I like to hear what others think. Maybe we get more input from citizens in the next month or so and go from there. Thank you.
So in term, in determining the, um, the twenty-year payment, the interest rate would be applied based on current trend, or I mean, how, how would that?
Yeah, so basically we would go get a loan for the project. We would typically be able to get a pretty low interest loan and then we would assess the properties or finance it for them based on the loan amount and the, the terms. So, yeah, it's four percent maybe for a, you know, million dollar project and then we just assess that out to everybody and say, here's what your bill is, you can pay it now or you can pay it over twenty years. And in theory, we're building in all those costs, so it's, it's being passed on, but we're not, we're not making it eight percent and making money off of it or anything like that. We're just trying to finance the project basically for them.
What, what kind of sewer capacity do we have now? Do we have excess?
We have some excess and then we have, um, projects budgeted to improve and, um, increase the, the capacity of the plant.
I know, I live in an unsued
Yeah.
neighborhood, uh, for thirty years, so my, my safety thinks. It's getting, getting on up there. And I think I've told this story before, when I got ready to be on my swimming pool, I staked it out where I wanted to call the health department, said you can't build it there. Of course, you gotta have drain line excess. So I staked it again, come back, said you can't build it there. I finally said, where can I build it? So where it is, is where he said I could build it. Now, it's, it worked out real well for me, it might not have been too good for, for, for Daphne there, she's my next door neighbor, but, uh, but it, it worked out okay for me. But I did see, in my neighborhood in the last two or three weeks, I saw a western septic tank, somebody was having their septic tank pumped, so, and I've had mine done once. So. And I've had questions about that, when, and you never moved in, you know, he wanted to know, how can we get, how can we get sewer? My answer back then was, you can't. And, and it still probably be basically true. But I think, I think having the process is a step in the right direction for me and everybody else. But I think, I think having the process is a step in the right direction for me and everybody else. So to me, it's a fair process. The town's going to pay their part and the residents is going to pay their part, which is only fair, in my opinion. Question that just come to my mind, I don't have any intentions, I'm probably living where I'm going to live till I die, but what if, if you put sewer in my neighborhood and I finance it over twenty years and then I sell my home, would that, would the homeowner be able to, new homeowner be able to assume that or we have to pay it off?
It can base with the property, yes, sir.
So would the repayment plan happen in your utility bill? It would not show up as like an extra loan?
You know, that's a good question, do you know that off the top?
I do not know that off the top.
Those individuals be able to just.
I think in your, in your presentation, you said annually. But to me, it would be, make sense to allow the property, you could go a step further and allow the property owner to make it over twelve.
Twelve months.
Installments on their water bill, which in the end would be the same deal rather than having to come up with X.
So.
Be an easier collection process than everybody coming in to pay their annually.
I wonder if that goes to the tax bill, though. It's deeded to the property, so it may be something that would funnel through the tax bill.
Could be, could be.
I'd have to look at that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could be, could be then.
Like Tommy, I'm in an unsued neighborhood and we don't have any right-of-way. So technically, my property line and my neighbor's property line shares the center of the road. Now, I know that the city, you know, comes in, it's a public road, right? But what I'm getting at is, in my experience back in Indiana, typically the municipality would run a lateral out to the right-of-way line, usually right behind a sidewalk or eight or ten feet off the edge of pavement, right? And that's where the homeowners expected to connect with their lateral. Are we saying we're going to share the cost all the way up to the house connection?
No, it would just be.
So that's something we have to think about, too, is do we need to purchase right-of-way so that we can get a lateral out for a connection for the homeowner? And then keeping in mind that homeowners are still going to have up to, you know, eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars in a lateral installation and maybe even replumbing, like inside their crawl space, potentially. So, I mean, I know this is like, it's a big deal, right? But I just want to make sure that we're taking into consideration that it's not just installing piping and ground. There's, there's right-of-way purchasing, there's coordination, there's communication to the, you know, the potential residents that once your septic tank expires, you don't have the option to replace it and you're going to have to spend a substantial amount in addition to the cost of the loan of the project. So.
And that's one of the things we looked at was the, you know, the CIP is very, just sort of general. So I want to say one of the lines cuts through your house on the.
Yeah, I have a second property where you got, where there's a proposal for an easement, yes.
So having the, having the step built in where we actually send it to an engineer to do a full in-depth analysis to look at all those different things would really get us to be able to drill down to what the actual cost is going to be.
And I think, I mean, that's one of the, what's so difficult about this whole thing, which is why we have so many, tried to build in so many steps and so many different conversations that we can have, because it really, it's, it's a very, it's a difficult thing to balance. And the current ordinance kind of, it says something along the lines that we, and we left that in, that, you know, the town will not be making that lateral connection and we would have to figure out a way to address, you know, those, the people who, well, I'm not going to get on the petition, but, you know, then I'll make the lateral. That was another reason why, you know, we're going to have very high threshold requirements, there'd have to be a good bit of buy-in, but certainly those are good questions.
Yeah, I mean, this is way out, but we'd need to understand like the break-even for the individuals, right? Because honestly, like, if I can replace a septic tank and fill fifteen grand on myself, but now you're telling me I got to make a fifteen thousand dollar lateral connection and make another loan payment for the whole project, we're going to get a lot, people are going to be looking at that.
Hardship.
Maybe, yeah, exactly.